Thank you Board of Trustees for having us here this evening. As you mentioned, I am Ashraf Sheikh, the Commission Chair for our Home Rule Charter Commission, and this is Brian O'Connor, the Commission Vice Chair.
Can you speak louder, please?
Adam, can you please check the volume on the microphones at the desk? I hear you breathing, so...
Hello, Tess?
There you go. That's much better. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Sorry. So today, we're just going to go over a presentation about our commission, or our proposed charter. To start with, I wanted to talk about our commission members. These are the nine commission members who made up the Home Rule Charter Commission, and we've been working pretty hard for the past almost six months to put together a charter for you and the town to look at and to vote on this coming November. I can point out down here, we have Sarah Cornelli, Candace Whitehouse, Lisa Cunningham, Adam Hayde, Bob Rades, and Ben Hempill, and Chelsea Campbell could not be here today, but she is hopefully joining us. Well, no, she's out of time zone.
I hear she's on an amazing vacation.
Yes. So hopefully, she's not. So today, rather than read you out the text of the charter word-for-word, so as to keep us at a reasonable timeline, I wanted to just go over kind of a generic form of what we did, the mindset with which we approached this process, and some of the major changes that we are proposing as to how, what differs from how we currently do business as the town of Erie. And then also the transition from going from statutory town to a home rule. This slide just lays out the list of the articles that are in the charter. It's kind of just to show you that we were fairly thorough in looking at various aspects of town governance and making sure we hit all of the big, big topics. And this is the entire text of the preamble that we all, as a charter commission, read and agreed to, and we unanimously approved to go into the charter. They're mostly the words of Ben Hempill, so I would like to invite him up to read the text of the preamble.
Is this on?
It can be. Mike at the podium, please?
Mike, check. Is that on? Okay. All right. The, uh, thank you. "We, the people of the town of Erie, Colorado, in order to establish a more effective and responsive government, to promote the general welfare and to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and future generations, do ordain and establish this home rule charter. We recognize that Erie's history, character, and resources require a government that is dedicated to local control, sustainability, and the preservation of our natural environment. We affirm the rights of all residents to participate in the decisions that affect their lives, and we seek to promote transparency, accountability, and good governance at all levels. We pledge to uphold the principles of democracy, equity, and justice, and to foster a community that is inclusive, diverse, and welcoming to all. We value the contributions of our residents, businesses, and institutions, and we seek to promote economic growth and opportunity while preserving the quality of life that makes Erie a desirable place to live. In order to achieve these goals, we adopt this home rule charter as a framework for local governance, and we commit ourselves to its execution for the betterment of our community and the well-being of all who call Erie home."
So to move into then a little bit of how we approach this process, we followed a comprehensive, step-by-step process in approaching this task. Before we began, we even asked the town staff to include for us a way to solicit and receive public comment outside of cycle throughout the process. So we had a form created on the website for anyone to approach and to send public comment. We also, we didn't want to just be restricted to the single public hearing required by law. And then, once we began meeting, we also started by looking at charters from around Colorado, from towns and cities of different sizes and locations who had become home rule recently and as, you know, as many years as many decades ago. This gave us an idea of what worked, what didn't, and the commonalities that we saw in a lot of charters. Once we had a good idea of what other charters looked like, we selected a generic charter and began going through and editing it, reviewing and editing it during our meetings every week. The commission, as a whole, was very good at doing our homework and doing research, independent research, so that meeting times were definitely more productive discussion of different options rather than everyone trying to learn as we went. And we had a good discussion every meeting of proposals and changes that we wanted to make. We met weekly, and we discussed public comments we received over the course of the week, and published any draft decisions we made to our website, with the help of town staff, of course. We also helped, held dedicated monthly public comment meetings where attendance was possible, both virtually and in person, and each one of the commissioners also reached out individually to gather feedback from their own circles. During meetings, we went over every provision for legal ideological and feasibility review, and we also reviewed what we felt like, for what we felt would benefit and support Erie grow as the years go. Every commissioner was actively encouraged to weigh in, so no one's voices were silenced or ignored, and most drafting decisions we made were made with unanimous approval of the commission. There were a few that came down to, that were more contentious that came down to votes, and we went by majority vote for those. So the driving principles, aside from the preamble that Ben eloquently read a moment ago, we were, we approached this looking to plan for the long-term future of Erie. We recognized that there's a lot of things going on right this moment that affect Erie, but we didn't want to be overly restrictive in how we wrote the charter, so that we're stuck in trying to solve the problems of today 10, 20 years from now. So we also began by what we felt was important to Erie from our own independent perspectives, what is important as to the residents and to the town of Erie. One of the main ones we came up with that coincided nicely with the Trails, Natural Areas, and Community Character vote that happened at the same ballot that put us, that empowered us. We know that Erie loves and covets its open space, and so we recognized that and we planned for that. We kept that in mind as we went through this process. We focused on providing as much local control as possible and leaving as much as possible up to the residents of Erie. We wanted to provide the guidelines of governance and just kind of leave specifics up to the town elected officials. And we also wanted to make sure town elected officials acted in the best interest of the town and its residents. So moving on to the beginning of our consequential decisions, we started with town governance, and we will, we all decided fairly unanimously to remain the town of Erie rather than the city of Erie, and we'll continue on with a council-manager form of government. That's pretty similar to what we have now, where a council does the big picture and the city manager, town manager, will administer the day-to-day operations and town staff. We are planning to have three districts, six council members, and the mayor making up the town council, everyone with four-year terms. And the town will have three districts divided as evenly and as fairly as possible, each with two council members, and each council member from each district serving staggered terms, so that every two years, every one of our regular elections, every resident of Erie will be able to vote for a town representative. And the mayor will be elected at large, which means by the entire town. And the elections will be held in November of even-numbered years to maximize voter turnout. This was one of the big contentious decisions, especially with aligning with the national, federal elections, how partisan rhetoric kind of takes front stage and all of that. But what it came down to at the base of it was, we wanted to make sure we had as many people's voices heard. And going back and looking at Erie's historical voter turnout, we're talking about over 70% turnout for our November of even-numbered year elections, whereas we've had, you know, low 30s for some of our April normal municipal elections. So in order to make sure as many people, to make sure our town council was as representative of as much of Erie as possible, we decided to move this to November of even-numbered years. And we hope that that allows more, most people to have their voices heard and represented on the council. And it also allows us to save money by coordinating elections with county and state elections, and that's just by virtue of moving to November. And as I mentioned previously, one of the other big consequential decisions we made was around open space. So this past November, the TNAK vote passed with 78% of the town voting to extend a tax for the purpose of protecting and acquiring open space. You can see by this little chart that it's only gotten more important to the town percentage-wise as time has gone on, from the initial approval in 2004 of 70% voting approve, voting to approve, 2012 up to 74%, and 2022 up to 78%. So in order to kind of listen to the voice of Erie, which is so rarely this clear, we've established the Open Space and Trails Advisory Board, which is OSTAB. It currently exists, and it cannot be abolished by the council now. It's going to be required to be in place as in town, as a town board moving forward. We've also required that the town council maintain a fund for the purposes of acquiring, maintaining, and expanding our open space. Similar to the, this task is currently held by that TNAK fund, but even if that, since that fund expires at some point, this requires the town to maintain a similar fund once that expires or sunsets. We've also made it harder to politicize independent boards and commissions by making it a little bit harder to remove the members of those boards and commissions. And that's just to make sure that not every single decision that they make becomes an immediate, get rid of the members of the board. Let's see, we've, sorry. So to put in some guardrails to good governance as well, we have protected the independence of the municipal court. Currently, there's some interesting ways that the municipal court works, such as the budget is based on the police budget or under, subservient to the budget, I think, subservient to the police. So we've kind of independently made it so that the municipal court is required to have an operating budget guaranteed by the town. And we've also protected the municipal judge from retaliatory firings from the council based on if they make decisions that the council doesn't like. We have defined a process for filling vacancies on the council, as this has been something of a contentious point in recent years as well as a while, you know, further back in our past. So from now on, any filling of vacancies will be a result of a vote from residents, not necessarily a new vote, but as a result of a vote. We're requiring the town to maintain transparency requirements, even if Cora is repealed at the state level, because as we said earlier, transparency is an important part of, you know, the residents having confidence in their town governance. And in that same vein, we're requiring that the town conduct and make public a yearly audit of town finances. I believe the town is already doing that, but this is just making it a requirement that it should continue to do that. And we also are requiring that the town maintain a code of ethics with enforcement mechanisms for violations of its provisions as well as for violations of this charter. So we wanted to make sure any, any actual consequences had teeth. Continuing along on guardrails, the big one that we decided to keep on was that even if Tabor is repealed at the state level, the town will still require a new vote of residents to increase or levy additional taxes. Currently, there's, you know, we heard a lot going into this process about how home rule would be used to create new taxes that would, you know, harm all of us, and while Tabor prevents that from happening, even at our town level, even under home rule, we wanted to make sure that even if Tabor goes away, that still cannot happen. And I wanted to emphasize that the charter does not, in its provisions, include any new taxes. We're also requiring that the town government maintain ordinances, or we want the town to maintain ordinances in increasing the requirements around campaign finance reporting. There's a few, there's a couple of bills already working through the state legislature that might help in this regard, but if those don't make it through, then the town will be required to keep additional, increase the requirements around campaign finance reporting to increase our transparency. And we've also made it, sorry, I guess I was reading off of my other notes, but yeah, this is the part where protecting the independent boards and commissions, protecting them from political pressure just from making decisions that the town, that, you know, the council doesn't like. And we have term limits for the elected officials with two consecutive terms in the same office being the limit. And finally, we've required the council to maintain strict review criteria around Title 32 special districts. There's a lot of issues going around statewide, around metro districts in particular, and this will require the town to make sure that any special districts coming before the council in the future would have to have provisions that take account, take into account the representation of the residents who live in those districts, since that seems to be one of the largest points of friction around these districts. All right, moving on to local control, we wanted to make sure that the town has all the rights of local control afforded to it by the state of Colorado Constitution. And currently, this will allow, this will allow the town to exempt itself from any statewide provisions, statewide statutes that, on matters of local and municipal control, bypassing local ordinances. So it doesn't automatically mean we have every power, but if we so choose to take that power, we'd pass an ordinance around that, and then we'd be able to govern ourselves in these local matters. And then we also allowed the town to set ordinances, ordinance penalties and fines beyond the current, the maximum currently set in state statute, and that's mainly just because some of the statutory limits for fairly large violations of, you know, public safety are very low. So this allows us to, allows the town to levy larger fines than those. And to leave, to leave things to the residents as much as possible, we are requiring that all new taxes will go to a resident vote to implement, which again, with Tabor in place is already a requirement, but it will continue to be the requirement even if that goes away. And filling vacancies in the council will always be a result of the resident vote. So we've created kind of a tiered method where if it's close enough to the previous election, the next runner-up will be automatically appointed, but if it's, and if it's closer to an upcoming election, we'll just leave that position open until, until the next election can take place. And if there's somewhere in the middle, the period in the middle of those two years, it will go to a special election. So there will be no, you know, it's always going to be left up to residents to choose their representatives. And then we also want to make sure we maintain the accessible rights to initiative, referendum, and recall based on the number of votes being cast, votes cast for the possession being recalled. Since we're growing so fast, we figured the best metric was to just however many people voted for a position, based all the requirement, the percentage of votes required for all of those initiative, referendum, and recall votes to be based on that number. And then one more thing on leaving it to the residents, we on the commission couldn't decide on the best way to handle council pay. We know it's kind of a political hot potato. No one wants to be seen increasing their own pay or voting for increased pay. So as we've written into the charter, first of all, I want to say, current pay was pretty much unanimously agreed is very low for the amount of time worked that you all do. We've met with you independently and in a study session to get an idea on what you do for this town, and we all unanimously agree that you guys are paid too little for what you do. But setting pay by ordinance, which you currently have the power to do and haven't done, I don't remember the last time that the council has set their own pay, it's not politically easy to do for various reasons. And so we find, we settled on leaving it up to the residents. For this measure, we are leaving in the charter the current method of setting pay, which is means set by ordinance by the council, and anytime pay is increased, it's not going to be put into place until those who voted for it are reelected or leave office. So it doesn't come into effect until after those who voted for it. And we are presenting a ballot question alongside this charter in the coming November election, where the pay will be set at a hard number. I believe we set at 1,200 for the mayor and 700 for the counselors, and then it'll be increased yearly on January using the CPI, that's the, sorry, Consumer Price Index, thank you, which is an area-wide price, it's a catch-all kind of metric for how the area is doing. And so that it rolls in things like inflation and median pay and all of that stuff. So yearly, that, that pay would increase on January, in January, but it would remove from the council the right to set their own pay. So it would become a hard number, increasing yearly, but the council would not be able to change their own pay. And so that kind of takes it out of the council's hands, there's no more political issue. And so that'll be presented as a ballot question as an immediate amendment to the charter alongside the charter in November. So to assist in kind of moving us from statutory Erie to home rule Erie, we also wrote a transition section. And so most of this section lays out pretty much that as things are done now, the laws and ordinances we have now, the boards and commissions we have now will carry over. And then the major changes, though, that, or kind of the way we handle this transition is that the provisions of the charter will become effective on the date of certification of the election approving it. So whenever, if this November, the residents of Erie vote to approve the charter, it'll become effective as soon as that election is certified. And then districts will have to be drawn by an independent commission in preparation for the November 2024 election. And so one of the big tasks for this council will be to facilitate that process and ensure that the districting happens. And based on how we've written it in the charter, the districting will have to be conducted by an independent third party to avoid any conflicts, and we've also done our best to ensure that the process is not political, not politicized, and, you know, free from gerrymandering. And this means that in one year after the passage of this charter, the town will elect an entirely new council in November 2024. And so that was another, one of the big decisions we had a lot of kind of back and forth on as far as how do we handle the transition for the currently sitting council members, because we're moving from April to November cycles. So the current trustees, we have five of you whose terms would have been up in this coming April, correct? Or sorry, next April. And so rather than try to perform a special election immediately, we've decided that the terms for the five who'd be expiring in April will be extended till November, until we can have a new election at our new regular election time. And then the two whose terms would have gone till 2026 will be cut short. This, you know, there were major trade-offs and discussions around both of these, but the options, as we saw them, we kind of weighed their pros and cons, and we felt like that was the better, better process as a whole. So in terms of the options we looked at, we had one option where we would continue to allow, like, continue those two council members until the 2026 election, and they would remain seated, and they would either be assigned to a district or would serve at-large. And that would help in that it would allow us to maintain some incumbent, incumbent trustees, now council members, to help that transition. So no one, it wouldn't be an entirely brand-new council, just learning the ropes for the first time. But the cons to that would have been kind of a complicated and extended transition period that would move into 2026, because it would require us to have a kind of special, not a special election, but a unique election for one time only, where we would only elect one council member each, and then potentially one at-large council member if the two existing ones were assigned at-large, or if we would just have a one-off for a two-year term or something. So we felt that that complexity in the election would be a large negative for residents of the town. And the, the option, the other option we looked at was just ending everyone's terms and moving to a clean break into home rule Erie. And we understand that that's not fair to two of the representatives who were duly elected at our last election. But it made it so that our transition to home rule was quick and easy, single cycle, we're done, we are now home rule, and we can continue, we can move on to governing in our steady state. And the cons to that would have been that if none of the currently sitting council trustees run for reelection or are reelected, we may end up with an entirely new council, which would require some extended onboarding period. But we felt like that was, that's happened even in our regular elections before, where we've had a completely new council, and at most, we've heard an onboarding can go, you know, several months, six, six to eight months. And so it was worth that short-term risk to make sure we have that clean break and a quick and simple transition to home rule. And so ultimately, in, I think it was a five to four vote by the council, we chose option two, to do the clean break. And that is the end of our decision, our major transition and decisions. I wanted to acknowledge the help we got from all of town staff, especially Amy Tietzel. We wouldn't have been as organized as we were without her help. Malcolm Fleming, the town administrator, who attended almost every meeting as well for where we discussed all of this. Debbie Stamp, our town clerk, also helping us with many of our questions around holding elections and her role here in town as well. Gabby Ray, behind the scenes, always helping us with our community engagement and communications. Most of our website and our open comment forums were her work. Hillary Graham, our attorney, you, the Board of Trustees, and all other town staff we had invited at various points to our meetings to answer questions and help educate us as we went through this process.
We very much appreciate the sacrifice that you guys have committed to pulling this charter together. When you guys chose to meet weekly for this entire cycle, I thought, oh, man, are they going to make it? That's a long time, and they're long meetings, but you guys, you guys made it through and provided an excellent product. I'm going to do public comment now, and then we'll do board member questions and discussion, and we'll go from there. So if you would like to comment, I don't know if we had a sheet back there, but if we didn't, there is a sheet?
No.
There's not? Okay, so when you, I'll acknowledge you, you'll come to the podium, please state your name for the record, we'll capture that for the minutes, and each person will have three minutes. So I'm going to read this script again, bear with me. It is now time for the public comment portion of this topic. Please remember, public comment is not an interactive question-and-answer forum, but rather a time for you to state your comments on this issue. Public comment provides an opportunity to discuss this issue only at this time. If you're joining virtually or would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the webinar control panel. If you're using a telephone, press star nine. You'll be called upon and asked for you to state your full name and address for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. We'll give you a 20-second warning when your three minutes are almost up. You'll also see it on the podium. At the three-minute mark, I'll ask you to wrap up your final sentence, mute your microphone, and you may resume watching the meeting or end your participation at that time. Please, I forget your name, I apologize, but...
And now, thank you, by the way, for at least trying to let me make a comment before, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, my name is Dori Erickson, and I reside here in Erie, Erie Commons, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I do want to say that there's much about this home rule charter that... And I do want to say that there's much about this home rule charter that I, I do like and appreciate. And I really appreciate all the time that you folks put into it. It's really quite amazing. Every week is amazing. I did make a couple of comments during the open comment sessions or during the open comment opportunities. None of them were actually taken into consideration when the final charter was made. So I wanted to bring up a couple of those concerns I had. One of them was related to section 406 and 604, that the charter states that certain critical decisions, like the declaration of an emergency and acting certain new ordinances and setting the penalties and fines and punishments for breaking ordinance and such, can be made with a two-thirds or majority vote of the board. You know, I hate to state the obvious, but it, it is that many decisions the board makes are based on, or they, they break on a political ideology. And not all board members or citizens share that same ideology. As it stands now, a two-thirds majority vote would always go in favor of only one political ideology, disenfranchising at least half the citizens of Erie. However, if the vote was required to be unanimous in the most critical matters, and of course, not all matters, but the most critical matters, it could only pass if the matter being decided was apolitical, understood by all board members to be in the best interest of the entire town and not one attempting to implement partisan ideologies. So I do oppose the two-thirds majority vote for those critical and emergency decisions and do recommend a unanimous vote instead for those. 4.06 again, the charter gives the right to the board to declare an emergency, like I said, with a two-thirds vote. And then the right of whoever the mayor may be to make whatever related executive orders he or she decides on at their sole discretion. You know, I'd like to go on record as saying that I strongly oppose this. I believe it puts too much power in the hands of one person. And the last few years have shown us that those powers can be so easily abused by our government. So I recommend that all items granting any kind of emergency powers or emergency ordinances to the town be struck from the charter altogether. And last, 104-3. I believe the charter needs to include a safeguard for citizens who are under threat of having their homes confiscated by the town for the nonpartial or late payment of taxes or special assessments. Right now, it just, the charter just says that the town has the right to acquire those homes and sell them at their, at their discretion. But there, there are no parameters set for how that might happen. For example, if the home is confiscated for a specific non-payment amount and then sold, the town should only have the right to keep the amount of the taxes or special assessment fees owed, plus a small administrative fee to cover the costs incurred by the town for the sale itself. All the other proceeds, after any mortgage is repaid, should be returned to the homeowner. To do otherwise is, is sort of theft. And it's been happening in cities and towns across the USA. People are having their homes taken for minimal tax non-payment and then having all of their principal and equity taken from them at the time. So I, I really oppose this item unless limits to what the town can claim over and above any amount owed are clearly specified in the charter and are reasonable. I, I think this would be a good thing to add to the charter, although I realize it's set now. So these, these are things I have that are, are very troubling to me. So I did, I did want to bring them up. And, and as I said, I did mention them during the course of when the charter was, draft charter was made available. And they weren't taken into consideration. So I just wanted to come up here and for the record, state that I do oppose these parts of the charter. But again, thank you guys for your work. I really appreciate it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, no others? So we'll move to the question, any online?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to the question and answer portion of the presentation. Let's see, who would like to lead off? Trustee Bear, any questions?
Sure. Thank you all so very much for your dedication. I really appreciate it and thank you, staff. It was such a huge endeavor. And it's always amazing to me when you can go from zero to like this document. I'm really, truly so grateful for your commitment in presenting this to the town. I appreciate that you really sought to listen to each other and to engage residents. I feel like that makes a really strong document and just really appreciate it. I have a question about the election. So if it's a clean break and we start fresh, and so we'll have an election that everyone is elected to four-year terms, but then after that, it's a staggered, how does that work?
Yeah, so I forgot to mention for the first election, it would go for, the way we have it written, anytime there are multiple candidates up for the same seat, the same position and with multiple open positions. The one coming in second place would receive a two-year term. And then the one coming in first would get the four-year term. And that would just be to maintain that staggered election. And so for the first year, that's how the election, the election staggering would go. And one thing I forgot to mention for the two candidates at least, who are, are the two trustees who are, would have their terms cut short. Your terms, in general, the existing terms served count towards term limits, but your two would not because they were cut short. So you would not be subject to the initial term limits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, trustee Harrison.
Thank you very much and I, I too echo the thanks and gratitude for meeting once a week. Getting us to meet once a week is a challenge sometimes and we have lots going on. Hopefully you didn't have, meet until one o'clock in the morning, like we do sometimes.
Barely.
Or 12. But my question is in terms of, to the resident's point in regard to 1.04 and rights and liabilities. Can you speak to what you found in terms of best practices out there in, in the state? And what you looked at in terms of going through that process to come up with what you have there? Is it consistent with what we've seen, that what statutorily is already there?
It is consistent. It's consistent with what we have found.
Okay, it's consistent?
It is. And I mean, areas like this can be also handled by ordinance. So not being brought up to this level, it can be, it can be done through ordinance and changed through ordinance easier than it can be amended in the charter.
And I think one of the things the public comment mentioned was, at least in Colorado, how those homes have been being seized and things like that. And a lot of those, especially here, have been done by those special districts, which is why we created that provision later on in the charter, meant specifically to address the issues around special districts and, you know, seizing homes based on delinquent fines.
Can you just go into a little bit more detail? Because I think that, that the town would like to, or the residents would love to hear more about that piece of it because they think it's town government and not metro districts, which are private entity.
So we, going into this process, we learned a lot more about like the specifics of how these governments, like town governments are formed and how special districts, which are basically small, hyper-local forms of government. And the idea behind them is that you have like a, of government that's only of the residents who live there and that they can control their own budget for various reasons to, you know, to make sure their neighborhood remains maintained, things like that. The thing is, a lot of times those special districts are formed before any residents actually live there. And as such, the only people who have any power are the people who will be developing on that land. And so we wanted to make sure that for any future, we can't unfortunately impact any of these agreements that have already been signed and these governments that have already been incorporated. But for any future special districts coming before the town, we've written a provision that gives them, gives the council ammo in living requirements on how those governments are formed, the special districts, and what they require as far as representation of residents who will be affected and impacted by that government.
So in actuality, what we have here is actually more power for the residents, not less?
This 104.3 taken in, in combination with the provisions on the special districts, yes. It's more, more protective of residents.
Okay, great. And that's my specific question in regard to that, which I think needed to be clarified, which I already knew the answer to, but I appreciate it. Number two, and just in, in general, at the high level of the due diligence that you all did when you looked at everything and created this from a best practices perspective, what you looked at across the state, different home rule communities, best practices that you saw there. Can you speak a little to that at at least a high level of how you went about that?
Sure. So I, I can't tell you how many charters I went over. And I'm sure all of the commissioners went over line by line and section by section to, to see what was being drafted here. Was it in line with that? Was it more protective than others were being? And there's sections of this charter that are more protective than, than other charters are. There, some of them are a lot shorter, a lot more general giving, more, more power to the council. And we took past experiences that we've, as residents, have dealt with and seen happen and wrote that into this charter, drafted into this charter. But the, the, the core of this charter is it's in line with others around the state.
That's good. And then last question I have is in regard to the emergency order and so forth. That became so politicized in the last couple of years. Because I was on the board when that happened and took seat when COVID did hit. And I'd like to say, just on behalf of that, that we did not take it in a political light. We took it as saving the lives of residents in the town. And I will stand by that 100%. And when you look at the rate of the people in this town who died from COVID, I'm sure that's probably very low as compared to other environments and other towns and cities. And so we took that into account. We tried to figure out what we can do to try to balance it out. But in regard to here on the emergency side, can you speak to what your goals and objectives were in terms of how you drafted this out? And what you were trying to achieve with doing it this way?
This again is one of those that was pretty much like lifted from most other charters. So the ability to have emergency powers is pretty much a requirement for like when you have a serious emergency. But we wanted to make sure, we shared some of the concerns of the public comment of we didn't want to give the mayor just unilateral power to do whatever. And so if you look at that, actually 406.2, there's, there's a line in there that actually says, "It's only, such action taken by the mayor shall only be effective until it is safe and reasonable for the town council to convene to ratify." And so with the way we have, like, with the way we have, you know, virtual, we can hold virtual meetings now, the ability to, you know, for the council to convene and ratify any action by the mayor can be, happen within a week. And so the mayor can't do whatever they want and just have it sit there for months and months and just affect the rest of the town. If the rest of the council does not agree, then that they would be able to convene and overturn that action in fairly short order. And so it's more just a, a power to address an immediate emergency. And as soon as the council can convene, then the normal processes would take over. So we understand and we shared the concerns with, you know, emergency power overreach because that's, that can be a place with a big hole for, you know, overreach to occur. And so we wanted to keep that under control as much as possible.
And I thank you for that in regard to it. And, and I think the decisions that come from emergency is situations that do, that do occur. Most in light of what happened with Superior and the city down there and with the fires that they had and those emergency orders that were put in place. We as a board take very seriously about counsel, getting counsel from our experts in terms of what is the risk, what are the costs, what are everything that is going on with that in terms of making the decision that we make. Sometimes it may be positive received or sometimes negative. But I take that seriously in terms of having the data and making sure that we do it correct. Because ultimately, I'm doing what I'm doing for the town. Also, I'm doing it to be very personal about wanting to do it safeguard my wife, my daughter, our friends, our neighbors. So I appreciate the amount of due diligence you did in terms of this right here. So thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions? I'll, I'll continue to take comments from other trustees. I just want to point out, we're, we're 12 minutes behind our, our schedule. So please try to be a little more concise with our comments, our questions, or both.
No questions? I'll be very concise. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Bill.
Thank you. Yeah, again, thank you all for doing this. It was a huge sacrifice of time and I know some of you are raising children and stuff. So that this is certainly appreciated. Just to have two quick questions on this. First, with regard to the OSTAB board and allowing that to, to kind of be a permanently established board. So I think OSTAB tends to be one of the safer boards and always, we always seem to fill that one. That's one that's very popular. So I can't imagine this happening, but occasionally with some boards, we have trouble finding people to serve on there. We can obviously make appointments, but you get scheduling things and, and some of our boards struggle with quorums. Is there any allotment in here if we had, and I'm just kind of throwing things out here, but if, I'm just thinking of a situation where we might, I, I could see where we could maybe merge like the tree board and open space because there might be some, you know, some crossover there that, that maybe we could get more people. Is there any maybe provisions for that in here that as long as we're not, you know, we, we still term it under open trails and space, that, that, that would be acceptable?
Going after the tree board.
What was that, Kendra?
Sorry. The answer's no.
Nothing to preclude us from doing that?
Okay, all right, thank you.
No, we really can't do that.
Oh, no, we can't. Okay, yeah, all right, thank you. Yep. Okay, there you go. So as I said, that was a hypothetical. I don't expect it to be a problem. But and then the other question I had, and this I know, been asked for a couple residents. So in regards to Article 13 in Town Finances, so, and I think in general, the, the charter is really just kind of establishing the, the structural order of things. So you talk about the budget process and, and when the budget's reviewed and things like that, but nothing specific to the budget. And essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, but the, the town council, mayor and, and city manager would control any growth in, in staff and/or monetary increases to staff and things, things of that nature, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I had. Again, thank you.
What was that again? I'm sorry, the, just the, that essentially the, in Article 13, which discusses all the town financial issues, it's really just a structural organization of, of how things are laid out, how the budget process is, some of the other financial obligations we have. And, and the specifics to say, you know, if we increase town staff or increase the size of the budget or increase a budgetary item, those are items that are subject to the future council, mayor and, and. Okay.
Did you say wages earn their power too?
So, sorry, not, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about like council wages, but is that? Okay.
That's the increase, like it's done today.
Yes. Okay. Okay, yep, thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Sowish.
So since December, as a resident in a nonofficial capacity, I have spent the past 20 weeks, plus tonight evidently, with you guys, sitting in that room, watching. 20 weeks, plus tonight evidently, with you guys, sitting in that room, watching exactly what you guys were doing, hearing the communication, the discussion. I think there's something like 46 pages in here. If I do my math, we're about 46 hours that you guys put into in public meetings, meaning every single page had an hour of time spent on it, on average. Each individual here has a, the residents owe a debt of gratitude to each and every one of you. Sarah, Candace, Lisa, Adam, Ben, Bob, Ashraf, we have Lisa also available. I hope she's well where she is.
Chelsea.
Chelsea. Sorry, Chelsea, Chelsea, sorry, my apologies.
And Brian, you forgot Brian.
It's okay. No, Brian as well, sorry. Yes. I know, always am. Yes, couldn't forget Brian, of course. The way that you went through every single item was, was amazing, truly amazing. It was, it was truly democracy at its finest. You guys were building a new government for this town. You guys were looking at what the other communities did, how they did it, seeing what fit us and what would be useful for the future. I know that you guys had a lot of less is more conversations. In terms of what you guys have, there is a lot of good. But of course, individuals are going to poke holes in everything. The individual who stood up earlier, those weren't any of the two items that I thought were, were an issue, a concern on my end. They are available via statutes. But of course, you're going to have individuals that are going to deem if this is best for them and them as a resident of this town. So you have 196 days before we find out if you guys are completely done, or if you guys have to regroup for another 180 days. So keep those seats warm, but truly, thank you for everything that all of you did. Every resident in this town owes you a debt of gratitude, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. I appreciate the work you've done, I said that earlier. The charter is very well-written. As you mentioned before, there are charters all across the state and actually across the country that actually can be drawn upon for best lessons learned, and I certainly witnessed to you guys, I would watch you on YouTube, I didn't actually go to the meetings, but I would see you guys really digging into the feedback that you're getting from the public, and also the cause and effect of what you guys were, were having to make decisions on, and it was very well thought out. So I'm very proud of the product that you guys have been able to put together, and I'm hoping that as it goes to our voters, that they feel the same way. So thank you again.